Okay, Dayton City Commission Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for their place with allegiance. This evening, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
We ask that you continue to share your grace on this city and its people, using us as tools with your divine guidance. Amen?
Amen. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the September 11th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 11th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Come, Ms. Blackshear, communications petitions, if you have any.
I'll have been distributed, Your Honor.
Okay, so I know I have a presentation this evening, and I'd like to ask Ms. Tate Winston to approach the podium, and give us some really exciting news of something that we're doing, I believe for the first time in Dayton, Taste of Dayton.
Hi, how's it going, Commissioner?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. So, yeah, I just want to talk real fast about Taste of Dayton. I host big events here in Dayton, and I had a vision to do something here because I was tired of our city going to Chicago and Cincinnati, like talent isn't in Dayton. So I got with the mayor and commissioners and everyone, and we decided to bring Taste of Dayton here. We have about 50 restaurants and 40 small businesses, so it's a place, it's an event to shop local and just support your community. You don't have to travel out of town, you can stay here and see the talent we have in our city. So it's this Sunday, September 22nd, from 2:00 to 8:00 at Catherin Fields. So when you come, like I said, you'll be able to try all the different food, shop local, we have amazing sponsors that'll be there, and I just think it's awesome. We need it, we deserve it. Hopefully, we can do more from here.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we have a lot of great cooks.
Oh, yeah.
Restaurants here in the city of Dayton.
Oh, yeah. Don't eat for two days. Stop eating on Friday so that you can enjoy it on Sunday, just fast, Friday and Saturday, and come Sunday ready to eat all the food. We have, I mean, everything is covered from, I mean, everything you could think of. So it's, and it's all from Dayton, Ohio, so it's local restaurants and food trucks, fresh juice, it's everything, yeah.
Okay, so I know my colleagues are excited about that, and sure they got a word or two of thanks and to you as well. Commissioner Turner Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Winston, for your vision and for your leadership. You've had two big full weekends the last two weeks, right?
Yes.
You hosted an event that myself and the mayor and Commissioner Shaw, we were in attendance, and I believe commissioners, other commissioners joined maybe afterwards as well. So again, just thank you for your leadership and your commitment, and we look forward to coming out this Sunday.
Thank you, no problem. I just want to say that I never want to be elected official, it's not going to happen, but I know a lot of people in Dayton, and I just like to make those connections, whether it's an event or just bringing people together. I had realized it was just seeing Facebook on post, seeing posts on Facebook, I noticed that people didn't know what they were talking about. I'm like, um, that's not that commissioner's job, that's the other person. So it was just the idea to bring people together, and that's what makes my job even better is when you guys can support me on my ideas and get the community involved, it makes it easier for me to make it happen, so thank you.
Yes, well attended on the Sunday, too.
Thank you.
Backroom, backroom, thank you. Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Mr. Fairchild, we have something to say.
I just want to thank you, Ms. Winston, looking forward to experience this on Sunday. And will your son's food truck be there?
It will not. I made them retire because I'm exhausted. I bought it for my mom to run it, and somehow she thought I was going to run it, so we, something was missing in there, so we put it to rest for a second until she figure out how she's going to run it without me, because I know food service wasn't, yeah, that wasn't my vision, so, yeah.
Okay.
And you guys have a special section there also, I put enough seats for all of you guys, so when you show up, you'll see the city of Dayton area or whatever under sponsorship, so just come.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, I just want to thank you again for all the work that you do in this community. You bring so much energy and focus to what we are trying to do here. You've always been a strong voice for small businesses, and I want to thank you for that so much, for all the contributions that you make, and I know that you're going to be making in the future, so keep it up, and thank you.
Thank you.
My colleagues are right, you've been a creative, a substantial force, thank you. And you're right, politics can sometimes be painful, but food makes it better. Keep up the good work.
It definitely makes it better.
Okay, my colleagues have said it all, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dixie, you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I do not have any additions. I believe the clerk may have a deletion, so you want to go back to her.
Okay.
And, but I do have a couple of items I'd like to highlight.
Aye.
The item three and four, they are service agreements. These are the CDBG discretionary funding allocations dedicated or directed towards youth activities that you will recall was a budget direction from the city commission. And so this, the first one is a $100,000 grant agreement with Omega Community Development Corporation to provide education programming focusing on enhancing reading proficiency, fostering a positive school climate, and improving overall student attendance for families in the Hope Zone area. The second, item number four, is a grant agreement for $102,000 that is with Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio to provide support and administer their Emerge program, which is Educate, Motivate, Elevate, Relate, Gain, and Entertain Youth Program. And so these are two specific, oh, and for the item number four, there was a slight typo that referenced emergency shelter grants, and it's CDBG, but the fund code, everything is fine, so nothing was impacted with regards to the calendar content. So these two items are the first of the few, of the wave that will be coming for you, before you in the future with regards to our discretionary funding activity from CDBG. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any additions, deletions, comments?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a deletion. At the request of the Law Department and after consultation with the Police Department and the City Manager's Office, calendar item number 12, which is ordinance number 32112-24, is being pulled from this evening's agenda to make some technical cleanups.
Okay.
The legislation will be presented to you at next week's meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's 3211124.
32112-24.
112, okay.
Number four.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, first of all, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
None on calendar items, Your Honor.
Okay, Commissioners, any comments on calendar items?
Very briefly, Your Honor.
Commissioner Sloss?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for highlighting those, those calendar items in addition to uplifting the commitment that was made for the budget of, I believe it was 2023, so again, that commitment was for a total of $1 million for youth programming, and we're now seeing that in addition to, I'm sure, other, to your point, other agreements that we will see before us on the next coming weeks on the, on the calendar. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, I'm excited about these investments in our young people coming, so excited about that, actually getting to our kids, so very excited for that, thank you.
We'll keep you moving.
Ms. Dixie and your staff.
Okay, thank you.
Likewise.
Shaw? Thank you. Okay, so accept the motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
I move to approve the City Manager's recommendation.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, legislation, please, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading Emergency Resolution Number 6821-24, authorizing the acceptance of grant awards from the State of Ohio through the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, under the One-Time Strategic Community Investments Grant for State Fiscal Year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of Resolution 6821-24.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to have Resolution Number 6821-24, declare an emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay.
Second reading Emergency Resolution Number 6821-24, authorizing the acceptance of grant awards from the State of Ohio through the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, under the One-Time Strategic Community Investment Grant for State Fiscal Year 2025. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading Emergency Ordinance Number 32106-24, to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $15,100,000 and zero cents for the purpose of providing funds for acquiring, constructing, improving, renovating, rehabilitating, equipping, and otherwise improving of the city's public facilities, including HVAC, elevator and roof improvements, as well as parking lot repairs, together with all necessary appurtenances. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss. Aye.
Second reading Emergency Ordinance Number 32107-24, to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $40,100,000 and zero cents for the purpose of providing funds for improving the city's transportation system by improving streets, including lighting, resurfacing major thoroughfares, residential streets and alleys throughout the city, providing for utility improvements and upgrades, improving and installing curbs and sidewalks, including constructing and reconstructing sidewalks, bicycle lane, bike way connectors, bikeway ramps, bicycle paths, and cycle tracks, and constructing and reconstructing portions of an extension to streets, together with all necessary appurtenances. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading Emergency Ordinance Number 32108-24, to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,855,000 and zero cents for the purpose of refunding at a lower interest cost certain of the city's various Purpose Improvement Bonds, Series 2015, which were issued in part for the purpose of refunding at a lower interest cost certain of the city's various, city's various Purpose Bonds, Series 2009B, which matured on and after December 1st, 2019. The refunded Series 2009B Bonds, which refunded Series 2009B Bonds were used for the purpose of providing funds for improving the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport by the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of airport improvements, including parking facilities, and providing all necessary and related improvements and appurtenances thereto. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading Emergency Ordinance Number 32109-24, to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,230,000 and zero cents for the purpose of refunding at a lower interest cost certain of the city's various Purpose Improvement Bonds, Series 2014, which were issued in part for the purpose of, A, improving the city's transportation system by improving streets, including resurfacing major thoroughfares and residential streets, and sealing various streets and alleys throughout the city, improving and installing curbs and sidewalks, including constructing and reconstructing wheelchair ramps, constructing, reconstructing and installing traffic signals, constructing and reconstructing portions of an extension to streets, and constructing, reconstructing, and repairing various bridges within the city; B, constructing, renovating, remodeling, rehabilitating, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving city buildings and facility, facilities, housing, and providing for city functions and services; C, acquiring motor vehicles, motorized equipment, and other equipment for various departments of the city, each together with all necessary appurtenances thereto. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading Emergency Ordinance Number 32110-24, to provide for the issuance and sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,100,000 and zero cents for the purpose of providing funds for improving the city's transportation systems by improving streets, including resurfacing major thoroughfares, residential streets and alleys throughout the city, improving and installing curbs and sidewalks, including constructing and reconstructing sidewalks, bicycle lanes, bikeway connectors, bikeway ramps, bicycle paths, and cycle track, tracks, and constructing and reconstructing portions of an extension to streets, together with all necessary appurtenances. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading Ordinance Number 32113-24, appropriating property designated as parcels 18SH&amp;T and 19SH, T1 and T2 in connection with the South Main Street Reconstruction Project. First reading Ordinance Number 32114-23, appropriating property designated as parcels 26SH&amp;T in connection with the Wayne Avenue Traffic Calming Project. First reading Ordinance Number 32115-24, amending the city's appropriations for the year 2024. Second reading Ordinance Number 32111-24, authorizing the disposition of certain real estate properties that have been deemed surplus land. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading Resolution Number 6822-24, authorizing the City Manager to accept federal fiscal years 2025 and 2026, Federal Aviation Administration Airport Infrastructure Grants, AIG, from the United States Department of Transportation for airport infrastructure and terminal improvements at the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport and Dayton Wright Brothers Airport on behalf of the city of Dayton in an amount not to exceed $13,408,304 and zero cents. First reading Resolution Number 6823-24, authorizing the necessary tax levies requesting the advance payment by Montgomery County, Ohio, to the city of Dayton, Ohio, of tax monies collected for 2025, certifying the same to the county, certifying the same to the county auditor. That is all, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Dixie, I understand you have some additional information you wanted to share with us?
Yes, Your Honor, I am so sorry I missed about one of my notes here. We do have a brief presentation on ordinance number 32115-24, so that we can share in more detail what the appropriation adjustments are being recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Dixie. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Clerk, and City Manager.
Good evening.
Before you this evening, as the City Manager mentioned, is the second revised appropriation. We have a couple of slides showing you and walking you through the changes from the first revised to second revised appropriation, but before I do that, I'm going to provide you with a high-level summary of the major changes. The second revised appropriation is 68.3 million, or 6.7% higher than the original, and 61.3 million, or 6.2% higher than the first revised appropriation. Now, fun fact, for the first time this year, the appropriation has reached a over-billion-dollar mark. And so last year, similar thing happened during the second revised appropriation, and that's because of the ARPA revenue replacement. And so reason is the same, this is why we saw the change last year around the same time, and we're seeing that change this time as well. Much of the $61.3 million increase is related to that $36 million transfer to the General Fund from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the 2023 ARPA revenue replacement. Out of the $36 million, $25.5 million transfer is coming from the General Fund and going back to the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to fund the Dayton Recovery Plan. The remaining $10.6 million transfer is funding various capital improvements. And the remaining increase includes $13 million, which is funding $12.6 million in the capital investment. $8.8 million increase is to cover grant cash matches and grant funding, and lastly, $1.4 million is for various new expenses. These are quite a few different numbers that I just threw out, so I will explain more in detail and briefly cover some of the major changes across all funds. Here you are seeing the General Fund and Special Project Fund, including Special Projects, overall General Fund budget reflects an increase of $42.4 million. As you can see on the screen here, Human Resources Department shows an increase of $220,000, and that is to cover the costs associated with the ongoing union contract negotiations. Fire Department shows an increase of $177,300, and that is to fund the higher fuel, fuel cost and recruit gear cost, which the recruit class is expected to start in November of this year. Fire Department is also transferring a total of $40,200 to cover grant cash matches for three grants that they were successful in receiving this year. Law Department is seeing an increase of $75,000, and that is to fund a 12-month contract for the human rights assessment. Police and Public Works collectively are seeing an increase of nearly $700,000, and that is to fund higher fleet charges that we're seeing this year. And then lastly, non-departmental shows a net decrease of $1.2 million, and that decrease is funding the increases in the various departments that I just mentioned. Having already addressed the $25.5 million to fund the Dayton Recovery Plan, I'll move to the $13 million transfer and provide an explanation of these funds. $10.6 million is being funded from last year of the revenue replacement funding. As you know, 2024 is the last year of ARPA, having, us having to commit all ARPA funds. And so 2024 is the last year of the revenue replacement. The remaining $2.4 million is a use of higher-than-anticipated interest earnings, which is also a one-time source that are funding these investments. So starting with the $2.1 million, which is providing funding for residential and thoroughfare resurfacing, this is for us to continue the work towards improving city's road conditions. As you know, 60% of the residents in the 2023 Dayton survey displayed dissatisfaction towards city's road condition, so this will continue our work towards improving the road condition in the city of Dayton. $1.5 million is to fund infrastructure improvements in preparation for the NATO summit coming to town in May of 2025. The planned use of this funding is to make improvements along the Main Street Corridor and downtown to beautify the city in preparation for the NATO summit. $1 million is to purchase a fire truck to provide adequate emergency response and support the expansion of Sierra Nevada Company with two new hangars at the Dayton International Airport. $1.5 million is for catalytic development investment, which provides funding for future development activities that can potentially increase job opportunities to city residents and in return increase, increases the tax base. And as you know, investing in job creation to boost income tax collection is an important tool for us to address any future structural imbalance. As we've seen, an influx of fire piles throughout the city this year specifically, $2 million is to remove and clean these neighborhoods that have the accumulation of these fire piles. $790,600 is pre-funding a purchase of two new rear-load trash trucks for the Public Works Department. This will provide replenishing the aging fleet and continue to move towards replacing the fleet based on our replacement schedule. $1.4 million is to pre-fund and purchase 17 new marked police cruisers, and that is also to continue with our replacement cycle, annually we replace about 17 to 20 cruisers, so this will provide us with that funding to continue with the, with the replacement cycle. The next two line is the combined total of $450,000, and that is to kick-start a youth violence disruption pilot program to help young people stay safe, reduce violence, and create safer communities for youth and families in the city of Dayton. $100,000 is to replace non-Windows 11 compatible computers. As you may have heard, starting in October of 2025, Microsoft is going to no longer provide support for the computers that are non-Windows 11 compatible, and so we are being proactive and setting aside funding for replacement of those computers in 2025. And lastly, $2.2 million funding is for technology improvements that includes replacing an outdated data center, and it also includes us building a new disaster recovery site. And so that is the total of the General Fund. Next, we have Special, Special Projects. The $3.9 million budget increase in Special Projects is providing funding for the youth violence deception program that I just mentioned, also the catalytic investment for development activity and the removal of fire piles. An increase of $4.3 million in the Special Revenue Fund category reflects the following changes, starting with the $200,000 increase in the Street Maintenance Fund is to cover the de-icing cost in preparation for the upcoming winter season. $50,000 adjustment in the Highway Maintenance Fund is associated with the increased fleet repair cost. And then collectively, a nearly $300,000 decrease in total HUD operating and HUD non-operating fund reflects a recent change to the HUD allocation, and so this provides us with the alignment of budget with the action plan. Miscellaneous Grant Fund has an increase of $4.3 million, and that is to cover the recent grant awards, including the $2 million for the Wright factory improvement, which we just discussed earlier, $300,000 for parks improvement project, and $2 million grant from USDA to plant tree canopy. The $36 million transfer is simply a budgetary transaction reflecting, reflecting both sides. There is a reduction in expenditures and an increase in transfers out, and because this is simply a budgetary transaction, there is no net change to the bottom line. And lastly, the increase of $9.1 million to the general capital budget is providing expenditure budget for the street paving, NATO preparation activities, supporting the development at the Dayton International Airport, purchasing of the two trash trucks, and purchasing of the 17, 17 police cruisers. A $660,000 increase in aviation operating is covering higher vehicle maintenance costs, technology upgrade, upgrade costs, and purchase of replacement vehicles. An increase of $2 million to aviation capital is for a grant-funded capital project, specifically Concourse B Terminal Skylight Modernization Project. An increase of $209,500 in the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund is to purchase vehicles delayed from the prior year, and that is due to the supply chain delays. We're still experiencing a little bit of those supply chain delays, and so this will provide funding to purchase those vehicles that we weren't able to purchase last year. Similar to aviation, Sanitary Sewer Capital Fund has an increase of $2.5 million to establish budget for an Ohio EPA grant. That grant is providing a funding to replace Wolf Creek liners for the Water Department. And finally, the Workers' Compensation Fund has an increase And finally, the workers' compensation fund has an increase of nearly $200,000. This increase is covering various costs, including drug testing for police department, CDL license training, and safety shoes reimbursement. And that is the extent of the $61.3 million change in the second revised appropriation. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Ms. Blackshear.
We got it. Appreciate it. Kevin Dixon, you have any closing comments?
Do you want to do citizen comments first, Mayor?
That probably would be good.
I think there must be a full moon tonight.
So, Ms. Blackshear, any citizens who are registered to speak?
Yes, Mayor, there are six citizens who have registered to speak. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you'll have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you'll be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful that this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Jennifer Alexander.
Good evening, Jennifer Alexander, Seabrook Road, Centerville, Ohio.
Evening.
Commissioner Joseph, after a meeting last month downstairs in front of three other citizens and myself, I asked you if you would vote against the DREDA contract. You proudly replied, "I will never vote against Israel." I can get three people to sign affidavits that heard you say that to me. I am challenging you tonight, which obviously with your mocking, you aren't going to repeat those words for public record, because I don't think that statement is going to age very well for you politically in this town. "I will never vote against Israel," those were your exact words, and that's what I came to last week's meeting and said, and you unfortunately weren't here for me to question you on that, especially since you are employed by a logistics engineer for an arms manufacturer, Sierra Nevada Corporation, that is profiting by selling arms and technology to Israel. Your own children sleep safely at night under a roof paid for by an arms dealer that sells drones to Israel, that is slaughtering children that have been running for their lives up and down the 25-mile Gaza Strip for over a year, children that are maimed, starving, dehydrated, and sleeping in refugee tents on top of raw sewage in the mud, to then die in their sleep by the drones your company makes. How do you sleep at night? I am asking you, Matt, to ethically recuse yourself and any conversations or voting pertaining to this relationship with the DREDA contract due to professional conflict of interest. Again, tonight, I'm asking the city manager to get the DREDA contract on a public work session agenda with a member of the legal department to educate the commissioners and mayor on the severability clauses of this matchmaking relationship with Israel. There must be transparency with relationship to citizens in this community about this relationship with Israel. It's a shame that the activists that keep showing up at these meetings, I think, know more about the history of this because none of you were around when this started. And I'm trusting Ms. Turner Sloss to get this action taken care of, for there to be some transparency with the community about what's involved in this and how easily you can walk away with it. And from what I've read, you don't even have to have any type of an excuse or reason. You can just say, "We're done with this relationship," because Dayton right now has no business trying to achieve a human rights city status if one of your sister cities is slaughtering the other sister city, and you've all helped finance this. Do better with your elected power.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Name and address for the record.
Kyle Green, 210 Wayne Avenue.
You may begin.
Good evening.
You called two weeks ago for a moment of silence for the hostages killed by Hamas. I'd also like to call for a moment of silence for Yotam Haan Alan Shamiraz Samara Talalka. They're IDF hostages, or rather, they're Israeli hostages that were, when approaching IDF forces to go back, were shot while waving white flags. I would also like to call for a moment of silence for the 10,000 Palestinian children hostages Israel holds that have been shown to be routinely beaten, tortured, and raped. I'd also like to call for a moment of silence for the 233 Palestinians and the 9,204 Palestinians that were injured, 223 shot and killed at the 2018-2019 Gaza border protest. It was peaceful, and the IDF then opened fire. With that said, it is unequivocal that Dayton is complicit, the Dayton government is complicit in funding this genocide. This genocide did not start in 2024. It did not start in 2023. It did not start or end with the Trail of Tears. It did not start or end with the rounding up of Jews under Nazi Germany. This has history, and whether you chose to be complicit or were passively complicit in the years and time till this moment, it is undeniable that the government has been. Commissioner Fairchild and Commissioner Turner Sloss, I do commend and thank you for wanting and seeking to change the government's relation with this conflict. I do ask, Dickenstein, I understand you're in charge of the DREDA from here on, or at least the approval of it, and I do ask it comes to a public work session. With that said, Matt Joseph, I understand you work for Sierra Nevada, who is currently partnered with Israel on unmanned aircraft systems, which is explicitly being funded under DREDA. It is, you shake your head, it's actually on the DREDA website as one of its case studies. It is marketed as one of its successful stories of our partnership with Israel. So shake your head all you want. It is publicly being advocated for and funded, according to your website. In which I turn to the rest of you. We, as the public, put faith in you to be non-biased, and I ask how he can be non-biased when he has a financial, a professional, and career foothold and reason to be pertinently involved with. Agreeing with them?
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Hi, good evening.
My name is TJ Angel Agent. Mom Duke's in the city here. Wanted to just kind of follow up with a get-together that we had Sunday, learn a little bit about the commissioner and what was going on here in the city. I spend a lot of time in the city. I work at the Marriott. I'm familiar with Sierra Nevada. They come through, Joby, vice president of Rite Aid, all these businesses. So I'm a cook and a bartender. So I get all the information because I'm a bartender. Right. So they tell me their plans, and then I give them my plans of what I see in Dayton, Ohio. I've been here for 30 years now. I've raised my children. I'm empty-nested, and I have spent majority of my life in downtown Dayton, North Main area. I'm aware of what took place during the launch Dayton campaign last week. It was a big fight over at the hub district. So being that's my area, I kind of found out, you know, what was going on, what can we do. I'm for the youth. I'm for five generations, actually, Gen Z, all the way down, Gen Z, Gen X, millenniums, all five of us are working together now. And my purpose is, I don't get this paid as much as you do, Commissioner, just $15 an hour to try and increase visions here in the city. So I feel like we have about 25 more years to grow and make companies, our youth, become sustainable for a lifetime. I really don't even know how I got dragged in here today. I spent the whole day downtown, and I'm telling you, I met and spoke with at least 500 people. We are demanding to see change. We're not looking for, I heard a young man say today that we're looking for money, but we're looking for character. We're looking for ways now to sustain Dayton for a lifetime. In the process of this, I'm going to throw this out because I have a team, a lead behind me, all downtown, all of Maine, East Third. We're not playing. We're networking, and we're looking to take over and build and not have anything taken from us again. You guys did that 25 years ago. We lost GM. We lost NCR. I mean, now we have Joby coming in, we have Flight Academy, some things I can't even speak on because they're non-declosure. Bourbon done that. So thank you for that. But it's a whole lot of money coming in the city, and then I see that you guys are giving out a whole lot of money. So is any of those grants going to increase jobs?
Yes.
That's going to make our youth, our old people, our babies sustainable to stay here? Please give me an answer at the end of this and tell me how we can stay married, because otherwise, it's a divorce for me. Everything's dead. We have...
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. T.J.
I'll come back next week.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. TJ.
Who'll be here?
Greg West, 1323 Kingsley Avenue, Dayton, Ohio 45406.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, and Clerk. It's been a while. Been a real busy summer. We've gotten a lot of youth to work. Hopefully, they can sustain that work and everything. But tonight, I'm here to talk about, you know, two youth events that we have coming up in the near future. The first one is, we're kicking off our fall kickoff for addressing youth mental health. We're partnering up with St. Peter's Church over in Highview Hills. Now, that's one of the hubs that we're going to start doing some programming at so that we can start addressing some of these concerns that, you know, everybody keeps coming in here and talking about, how to start addressing some of the trauma that, you know, we've normalized as a community that we don't even realize that is causing generation after generation of violence and everything in the city. So I gave each one of you guys a flyer. Please help us to get that information out to the community. This is a free service, like all the services that we do for our youth and for our community. You know, we'll be giving them different CBT or cognitive behavior therapy things to look at so we can stop some of the bullying, some of the violence and everything that's going on. The second event that we're talking about is time for our second annual Hooked on Fishing Not Drugs event that we had last year up at Lakeview. Lake, it was a success. We serviced over 32 kids, youth, last year. We're looking to increase the numbers. So, you know, Mayor, get that angler that you had out there with us last year so we can catch us a couple more fish, you know, tell him we're ready again, and hopefully that, you know, we can partner with you guys again. That's why I can't, you're not on the flyer yet, but if, after we talk, if you guys can be, you know, a sponsor and help us out, we gladly put you back on the flyer. We have some other things coming up, and we will be back in touch with you guys. So thank you for your time, and hopefully see you out there at this fishing event.
Thank you, Ms. T.J.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Clerk, Shelley, City Manager, sorry. My name is Victoria McNeil, 107 Neal Avenue, Riverdale President. I came a couple weeks ago, and some of the graffiti that I was bothered about is being remediated now, not only by me but other people, the highway, underneath the Highway 75, 35, mostly 75. That's been taken care of. And I keep thinking, murals underneath there now, but, you know, that's another story. So anyway, and I noticed the paving up in North Riverdale, and it looks much better. It really does. So there's two issues I wanted to speak about tonight. The first one is Mary Avenue Pocket Park. It's actually off Ridge, but everybody calls it Mary Avenue. So there was a bad storm some time ago, month or so ago. So there was a big tree that cracked down on the playground equipment and damaged it bad, so they had to take out the tree and the equipment. I mean, yeah, and the equipment, and then they decided to take the old swings out. So Amanda lives on Riverside. She said somebody was driving under the park shelter now with vehicles, so they're going to put some posts up. But I asked Fred, "It'd be a nice Christmas present if we could have some new playground equipment," because it was unexpected. We understand that, so hopefully that'll get taken care of. And so the other thing, I'm hopeful about that too as well. And the other thing I have is, so I know we have a lot of, I know y'all call them unhoused people. We tend to call them homeless in the North Main corridor. I brought a list of about close to 20 houses. I can't give you detail on each one because it would just take too long, but I do have a list. I know Mr. Lautimer's been working on a lot of them, but it's just like they're now just burning things when they go in. There was a fire in Viola. We talked to the housing about it, and there's some people that they, actually, the one at Marathon, they got evicted, 126th Marathon. They went to the court, red-tagged everything. The police had to vacate them. Now they're back again, taking the boards off and reliving. I was like, I don't know. It's just frustrating for the most part. But I did bring a list, and Mr. Gondol left, and so I have some in my areas, well, they're camp in the backyard, they're in the garage. And then the most disturbing thing, I think, is because they leave a lot of bulk and mess, and it's just like very annoying. So you have to call for that to be cleaned up as well. So those are the issues I wanted to speak about. If you want my list, I left my name and number on it, and you can help me with that, hopefully. And we need more housing inspectors. That's what, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Julia Capers. I live at 3606 Lakeside Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening. That's the wonderful neighborhood of Pineview Neighborhood. I think you're all familiar with us. We've been around for a while, and you have attended some of our affairs, and we really, really do appreciate it. Makes us feel like you care about the neighborhood. And as I sit here and listen today, most of the issues that we are talking and hearing about is about sustainability. It's about the youth. It's about the family. It's about the neighborhood. It's even about foreign policy. So you're dealing with quite a bit. I'm going to give you some relief. Ms. Kathy Harris. Kathy is with me today, and we're here to invite you to our neighbor-to-neighbor community event. It's October the 5th, the first Saturday in October. We are celebrating unity among the neighbors. Families need to get together, that's your first unit. Then neighborhoods need to come together, will be the second. When the neighborhoods are together, that is prosperous for the district. When the district is together, that's prosperous for the state, and the state's getting together is prosperous for the whole national scene. And we have been successful in uniting with the Lakeview community. So we have, this project is a combination of unification between Pineview Neighborhood and Lakeview Neighborhood, and our goal is to get all the neighborhoods in West Dayton to be as one. This is our first project together. We're inviting each of you to come, and I know that you're coming because you've come to other affairs that we had. We appreciate it and like to see you there. It makes us feel like we care about the local neighborhoods, because we have youth there, we have families there, and we are inviting you all to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capers.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
That is all, Your Honor.
That's all. Okay. Ms. Dixon, any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor, a couple of closing comments. One is Ms. McNeil... One is, Ms. McNeil, Ms. Clerk, if we can get that list, we will have our fire police and Public Works folks make sure that we are aware of those addresses so that we can do some proactive work. Secondly, I just wanted to make some comments on the DARA history relationship, just for clarification. The DARA was, began in 2010 after a mission in 2008 from a large delegation of leaders who came from the Dayton area, went to Israel. The DARA strategy was developed to enhance business development between Dayton and Israeli companies. Since 2013, the city, Montgomery County, the Dayton Development Coalition have supported this program collectively. And we've supported it by funding a business development director who sits in Israel. And that development director is helping to facilitate and foster connections between business to business so that there are opportunities for business development, economic impact. The $50,000 that the city provides goes towards the salary of the business development director. Zero funding from the city of Dayton's budget goes to the Israeli government, goes to the IDF.
Excuse me, sir.
They do not go towards military installations. They go to this one business consultant who is the business development director. And that business development director, again, supports and facilitates connections. It's not just companies. There are all of our neighboring educational institutions have been able to take advantage of this, have been able to partner on significant research collaborations. Students have been able to.
Sir, this is a business meeting. I want to ask you to not respond during this time, you've had your opportunity.
Students have been able to engage in Israeli classrooms and vice versa and on learning on various projects, from business modeling projects to other research projects. So there has been a very robust relationship that many local businesses, universities have benefited from by gaining access to new markets, cutting-edge technologies, and collaborative research. And the 2024 contract was executed on June 21st in 2024. So that program continues. There continues to be a great deal of support. And I will mention that there was a study done that essentially estimated that the economic impact for this, for the Dayton region was $50 million. And so it's a pretty significant impact for our companies and our educational institutions and this strategic relationship. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner, closing comments, Ms. Mr. Turner-Sloss.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank all of our healthcare partners for this afternoon's work session. Thank you to Ms. Jackson, Mr. Becknam. Thank you for leading that initiative and that conversation. Again, I know that was something that was spearheaded out of a conversation that took place on the day of some time ago in regards to the petition for a public hospital. So again, I thank you for taking that initiative and bringing all our partners together. I think it was a very fruitful and thoughtful conversation, a lot of great information was shared, and it is my hope that we continue that conversation and making sure that we are definitely providing the resources and the information necessary to all of our residents and the members in our community. So thank you, sir, for being here, the President of Kettering. Thank you, sir, for staying an additional hour with us. Thank you. I would also like to answer, Ms. TJ, thank you, Ms. TJ, for being here and it is good to see you again. You were, in fact, at the session that was held by Ms. Winston as well as a number of other community leaders. So it's good to see you and it is good to see that you are actually participating in the process and advocating and showing your leadership and giving voice to the concerns and the issues that we have and the challenges that we have in our community. So again, just like to thank Ms. Winston and the rest of the team and the organizers for last Sunday's event. In regards to your questions, I mean, we can have a conversation offline as well, I want to be respectful of the time, but we are, in fact, making the investments necessary. You just saw on the calendar two service agreements that we just approved that are geared towards our youth engagement, youth training, youth development, and other emphasis around the resources that are necessary for our youth. And that was a commitment that we made during the budget cycle of 2023. Actually, it was done in 2022 for the budget of 2023, but nonetheless, it was a million dollars that we have committed to for youth services and programming. And in addition to doing that, we're also in talks and having conversations with our Violence Interruption Program. I'm sure the mayor will speak more to that, but there is work that is being done and there is investment that is being done. So we do need you, we need you a part of the conversation. And again, we can talk offline, because I want to hear your thoughts and I hope that we can work together on some of those other things that you have mentioned. Mr. West, thank you, as always, for bringing and doing the great work that you, as well as your organization, Felons With A Future. And we just want to encourage everyone to come out for the youth program, which will take place on October the 7th at 5:00 PM, as well as the fishing trip. That's gonna be a full weekend, if you will, right? And the fishing event that will take place at Lakeview, Lakeview Lake on Gettysburg from 10 to 4 on October the 4th. So again, thank you for your leadership and for being here. Ms. McNeil, Ms. Dixie, thank you for highlighting Ms. McNeil's concerns and making sure that we get that list that you have provided to us over to the proper department so that we can get those issues and concerns addressed very swiftly. And keep doing what you're doing. I really, really appreciate you being the eyes and the ears of the neighborhood. Thank you so much for your leadership. I know it is exhausting and tiring and daunting, but nonetheless, you help us and we need to continue those relationships. And Ms. Capers, thank you for the invite. Ms. Capers and Ms. Harris, we really appreciate the Neighbor-to-Neighbor event that will take place on October the 5th and I'm sure many of us will be there. And last but certainly not least, I would like to thank Ms. Alexander and Mr. Green for your comments. And thank you, Mr. Green, for calling for a moment of silence. You're exactly right in terms of what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a number of issues and, again, I stand firm in my support for a ceasefire. So thank you both for giving voice to those issues and your leadership. And that is all I have.
Good. Okay, Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you to our citizens who've come out and participated in our meeting tonight and lifting your voices. There's great opportu, well, first I want to say be mindful, we are hosting the United States Air Force Marathon this weekend, so runners are starting to arrive in the city even as we speak. And so be mindful of them and be a good host as they come for the Air Force Marathon, which is Saturday morning. There's also a fun run on Friday night. Look forward to the Taste of Dayton on Sunday, but there's other things you can do this weekend. Saturday is Belmont Days.
Yep.
So come out to Belmont and enjoy the water ble, the renovated Water Bleed area, so exciting for them. And if you like innovative theater, Stivers High School is having their 24-hour theater performance on Saturday night. The students will get their assignment tomorrow after school and then have about 24 hours to create, stage, costume, write scripts, and then perform on Saturday night. So very innovative theater. And Ms. Dixie, I don't know who to thank or who in the department, in the city, which department, but I was walking by the arcade and the six, 308 leaders were on the sidewalk and I overheard them and they said, "The city blew us out." And so that caught my ear and I'm back and I said, "What did we do?" Apparently, one of our departments ordered from them and just ordered everything they had. And so I wanted to.
Support it.
Yes, I wanted to thank whichever employees were responsible for blowing them out, but we appreciate their support and modeling for others to be good customers of theirs. So thank you. And then finally, I think Ms. Capers, and I hate that she's left, and I think she had the most hopeful word tonight, which is encouraging us to build community and build it at the neighbor level, but as a city, I think we have great opportunities to build community in our city. And as she said, it starts with the neighbor, the neighborhood, the district, the state. And given our legacy and the opportunity with the NATO Summit, we have opportunity for citizen diplomacy to build community, not only here, but throughout the world. So I hope that we can seize on her vision.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you for that and thank you for bringing up Belmont Days. And thank you, Commissioner Joseph, for inviting me to the Belmont cleanup in preparation for Belmont Days. I really enjoyed that sense of accomplishment.
Getting ready.
Yeah, it was great. And Commissioner, thank you for bringing up that we hosted our partners in healthcare to have a conversation about West Dayton. One of my big takeaways from that, although we did not have enough time to really go extremely deep and explore everything, was that healthcare solutions in this community, especially in West Dayton, are going to be solved by preventative maintenance, preventive healthcare, not in emergency rooms. And it's about providing care providers in the neighborhoods. It's what we grew, we all grew up with that, doctors in our neighborhood that we could go to. And I think that's going to be the primary solution to making the health outcomes in that community, that part of our community that we want, that we all want to see. So I was really thankful that they came and hopefully we'll all be able to have them back and go a little bit deeper, because I think it's important that the community understand how to really influence healthcare outcomes in our community.
Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, I want to thank all the Commissioners for mentioning Belmont Days. It will be this Saturday from 11 to 7. There's great food, there's good music, all kinds of things to see, good people to talk to. Love to see you all out there. It's, if you haven't been there before, it's on Water Bleed just west of Smithville. There's parking in some public lots, area lots, parking on the street. Love to see you guys out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good. You know, I already mentioned earlier this evening, I thank you to Mr. Dick's Winston, sorry, for the great work this past weekend with the program, helping more and more citizens understand the roles of elected officials in government. Very well attended, packed house, if you will, and talked to a lot of individuals who came away with a tremendous amount of information and clarity with regards to that. Been a busy week and have some additional things to say, ironically, dealing with our youth, okay? We just kicked off a couple of days ago, the Mayor's Youth Council, and so they're working with them, individuals from each high school, that's going to put us in a position where we're having more and more listening sessions with young people to hear what they have to say about the quality of life that they want to have, that we want to leave for them. As we mentioned here a lot, that right now, our youth is 20% of our current population, but they're 100% of our future. And so we talk about that almost every day. The aspect of if you want to have good citizens, we have to grow them. We have to do a better job of doing that as adults. So again, that's constant, constant conversation from all my colleagues that we have up here as well as staff and the partnerships that we have throughout the city. From working with our labor groups, working with our schools, working with all the local colleges and universities, including Sinclair Community College, we're all focused on trying to do everything we can to enhance the opportunities that we have for our young people to be successful. You know, we focused a lot on the last 10 years, at least, with programs, with My Brothers' Keepers program 10 years ago, started with President Obama's program. We worked males of color, females of color. We've done Teen Voting March, which we will be doing again. We've done work with, again, the Youth Summit for the last three years, having at least 25 young people from each high school in the city to come together to share information about them and listen to them about what's on their mind so we can, again, make the appropriate adjustments. We've done additional programs with the aspect of taking young people out of town, taking young people to Chicago, not Chicago Street, but Los Angeles, taking people to, young people to Oakland, California, to have presentations with them in person by former President Obama to sit and talk for three hours to 500 young people to, you know, like their sons, he and self-carey as well. Again, all trying to invest in the youth that we have as far as the city is concerned. The aspect of anti-violence programs, because it hurts us so much when we have young people who are doing things to harm themselves and to harm others. So we're making major, major investments, something you've heard about from my Commissioners, to make sure that we keep them as safe as we can, so they can be alive long enough to get some of the jobs that we have been creating. To thank our business community for helping to create the many jobs that we have as far as the city is concerned. So we're moving very, honestly, as hard as we can in those spaces for the two reasons I mentioned before. If we want good citizens, we have to grow them and the fact that the citizens right now represent our future. So again, I want to mention that. And lastly, receiving an award for this city, for Dayton, on behalf of the City Commission for starting the first males of color program in the state of Ohio. Very good, this is a program started by President Obama, but it's been taken over by Senator Sherrod Brown and Barry Larkin, who's a Hall of Fame baseball player with the Cincinnati Reds. And having the opportunity to be with some 300, 400 young people in Cincinnati yesterday for the opportunity for them to have a tour throughout the entire stadium and to talk to some 20 professionals in all type of support areas for athletics, not just to be an athlete and how many thousands of dollars and millions of dollars are available in those areas as well. So again, this commission is very much committed to making sure our youth have everything that we can give them to be successful. So love for all, peace for nobody, excuse me, hatred for all, no hatred for all. Let me get together. I'm so, I'm so confused this evening. So love for all, peace for no one, or anger for no one. I get it straight. I just want to say it all. Everybody have a good night.